Opportunity to inform you more about the entrepreneurship into varsity. The EDHE into varsity. So this year we've got our three winners in the room and I'm going to introduce you shortly to them. And then I would also give you a bit of background as to what is the EDHE entrepreneurship into varsity? And what is required from us to be able to continue with the process? My name is Nadia Waki and I work for UCT Career Service as Head of Sustainability and Impact for Careers. And I also manage the, I'm also the Chief for Entrepreneurship for Student Entrepreneurship COP for the ED Department of USAP, which is University of South Africa, as well as the representative for UCT Intervasity. I have with me in the room our three winners, as well as Jean-Main looks after my technical side. And then of course Alison when Evans, who's always helped us with the communications side to assist and get our students ready for the competition as we continue on it. Going to give you a bit of overview, I'm going to share my screen very shortly, a bit of overview about the competition. You can ask some questions and then I think tonight I'd like to leave most of the time to Chido, Shefaz and Vuthari. So they can tell you about their journey because ultimately this is really about them sharing with their journey and encouraging you to start your journey if you haven't done so as yet. But thank you for joining us. If you just share my screen. Everybody's seen my screen. So yeah, so this is the Entrepreneurship Development Network, as I said earlier, and it's regarding the EDHE Entrepreneurship into varsity 2022. The EDHE strategy is really about equipping every student and graduate for economic participation through entrepreneurial activity with an emphasis on that student, women journey. And so of course we, we, we would like everyone to participate. But as it is, the women has always been underrepresented and so ED has decided to focus this year on that. And they have a special program called Sweep at the moment. So the, the competition is really about equipping students. But the purpose is to identify the top student entrepreneur in South African public university and to recognize and showcase their businesses. And also to invite, of course, investment into the cohort of students. And the competition really allows for aspiring entrepreneurs to pitch their business ideas. In that process, university will have opportunity to showcase the entrepreneurial talent and demonstrate in the ways in which they can support and grow the next generation. Who can enter the, in the competition? All students, full or part-time in the 26 public universities has to be registered undergrads and, or postgrads and postgrads would be have to be continually enrolled. Students can be full-time or part-time and you must be within good academic standing of course. There are four categories that students can enter to, and these are business ideas, existing business tech, existing business, social impact and existing business general. For the existing business, which is a category two and four, there's a good bit more criteria that needs to be met for you to qualify. And of course you've got to be the owner, founder, controlling shareholder of the existing business. And of course be principally responsible for the operation. Okay? The business entered here must be in operation at least three consecutive months prior to entering the competition. The business entered into the competition must generate an income or receive some form of investment. And this is really to make sure that you understand how to finance this, et cetera, and to show business play. The process for entry of course is, we've shared this out before, it's on the ED website and I will share it again later on. And there you can follow the instructions. And entries are reviewed by me as well as a group of judges. And it has about two sessions before it actually goes to pitching. The internal pitching, then after internal pitching, we go to regional, then of course we go to national. This is a competition as you in for the long run, if you get right through to the end, because we start now and we only crown the winner in November, but during that time you have to prepare, really focus your business with as needed. We're half out where we can. So basically that is what the competition is all about. I'm not going to talk too much about the competition. You can write to me if you have any questions, et cetera, and I'll be more than happy to respond to it. But tonight I really would like you to meet our last year's winners. And I'm going to ask them to put on the cameras when we, when I announce their names and so they can introduce themselves as well. Thank you. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. Hello, Chido, your face is on first. I'm going to introduce you first. And Chido is the brain behind Bamba Academy, an education technology platform that makes learning African language and cultures fun and interactive at a click of a button. And eventually to help her come out at the top of the existing business tech category at the competition. Welcome, Chido. Need to switch off, switch on your mic please. We can't, can anybody hear Chido? Actually, I think you might have a sound problem. Can you try now? I can't hear you. I'm going to introduce Vuthari and then we can, then you can try and sort out your sound. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks. Vuthari, great to have you here with us again as well. Thank you so much for joining us. And so Vuthari originally started Chewy to provide virtual medical consultations between people and their doctor. I'd realized that many healthcare professionals were all moving in that direction and that the market would soon be oversaturated. No one in South Africa had been focusing on pets and moving their services to a virtual platform. Welcome, Vuthari. Please introduce yourself and more about your business.
Thank you so much, Nadia, and thank you so much for this wonderful event that you're having. Yes, as Nadia mentioned, my name is Vuthari Sherinza. I'm a fifth year medical student and I'm also the co-founder of Chewy. Yes, so Chewy is a one-stop shop for all your pet needs. Chewy provides virtual consultations. We're happy to say we're the first to provide virtual consultations in South Africa. But it's more than just that. It's really an ecosystem for all your pet's needs, whether it's pet grooming, pet food, and all things related to pets. And then we're also trying to provide pet care services in rural areas and in peri-urban townships where they've been found lacking. So yeah, that's basically what Chewy is.
Thank you so much. Shefaz, are you here?
Hi Nadia, yes I am.
Hi, are you able to put your camera on, Shefaz?
Um, it's on. Can you not see me?
No, I can't see you. They'll be coming up now.
Can you see me now?
It's all done. I can't see you, so maybe something wrong with your camera. But you can go with it. So I will introduce Shefaz. It's a, Shefaz was our overall winner. She came up with the idea of establishing Goshay, an online donation-based crowdfunding platform that allows students to raise funds to cover their outstanding university fees. She was desperate to lend a hand and help cash trap students. Welcome, Shefaz. You can go ahead and introduce yourself.
Um, so is my camera working now?
No, we're not. We're not able to see you.
Is it? Okay, that's a shame. But yeah, my name is Chivo and I'm the founder of Goshay, which again, as Nadia mentioned, the donation-based crowdfunding platform that is dedicated specifically to tertiary students with current or historical debt. And it's essentially a tool that students can use to raise funds to cover those fees in order to register for the academic year to cover their fees, whether that's historical debt in order to obtain their qualification. And yeah, essentially that's in a nutshell what Goshay is about.
Thank you. I see Salom says that she can't see you, so I'm not sure why I can't see you, but that's fine. Thank you very much. Has Chido come back yet? And Chido joins us then. She's just left the meeting. She's kind of come back now. The technical beauties we go through. Oh, there's Chido. Chido, let's see if we can hear you this time. You want to take off your, your Microsoft switch?
Yes, hello, can you all hear me?
Okay, let me do an introduction for Chido again. Hi, Chido. She does the brain behind Bamba Academy, an educational net technology platform that makes learning African languages and cultures fun and interactive at a click of a button. And eventually helps some come out at the top of the existing business category at the competition. Welcome, Chido.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everyone. Hi, I'm Chido. I'm a Masters in Management Finance student and yeah, I'm the co-founder of Bamba Academy.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks so much and welcome. Great to have you all here. I'm going to ask you a few questions, but I do want the, the audience in here to maybe just ask the questions. And this is your opportunity to ask as much as you can. You can get all the answers. You can start your, your journey towards entrepreneurship or the into varsity, whichever way that would take you. Okay. Welcome, everybody again. What did you find? So I'm going to ask Vuthari this question first. What did you find different from the competition to others? And do you think you had to prepare differently?
Um, yes, thank you so much for the question, Nadia. I think what I found different for EDHE was that it's a progressive competition. So it has multiple stages, first being the internal round, then regional, then eventually it's, you know, the final round. Compared to other competitions.
Chido, you went to your, your Microsoft, Chido, for some odd reason. And Vuthari, your Microsoft?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, I was just saying that I like the progression of EDHE of having multiple rounds and multiple stages compared to other competitions where it was just one, the competition is just takes place on one day. So just having the multiple stages allows you to prepare and make sure that your, your, your presentation and your business is better each time. So just hearing the judges' input from the previous round, it gives you more insight as to what to prepare for the next round. Yeah.
Vuthari, there's a question posed and I'm going to ask you the questions, you know, that just came up to you. Say, but what was the idea when you all started?
Sorry, Nadia, I think your mic is off now.
Okay, I don't know what's going on. The mic seems to be switching on and off here. What was the idea when you all started in the first place? And what was the thing that pushed you to fight for it? That's a question from Mugaw.
Wow, that's a really good question. I think I.
Sorry, Vuthari, your mic's gone this time.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. It's like somebody's playing with mics.
Yeah, sorry, I'll just keep my eye on the mic. So I was saying that I'd entered in 2020 and it hadn't gone as well as I'd wanted to. But I just had the determination that, okay, I'm going to come back in 2021 with like a better strategy, fix the business, make sure that I, I'm better than I was the previous year. So just coming, entering the competition, I just knew it was something that I had to do. But having the, the foresight that I need to be better, I've seen the competition. I've seen how other people present and even practical things of like, maybe I should improve my slides. Maybe I should speak differently, you know, I just knew I had to up my game. So I think what really pushed me was knowing that I have to do this competition because it's, it's a really great way to grow your business. It's a great way to have access to capital for your business, as access to a market, access to a network. So as a student entrepreneur, it really made sense to be determined to go the whole way through with, with the EDHE competition.
Thank you, Vuthari. And Shefaz, would you like to also answer the question?
Yeah, sure. So let me just read the question again.
Are you unmuted still?
Sorry about that. Um, so the question is asking what the idea was in the first place and what the thing was to keep fighting for it. So for me, I think it's, it's actually a problem that all of us understand, a problem that we're all sort of intimately sort of acquainted with. And that's essentially the idea that tertiary education is inaccessible or its access is governed by financial capability. And so that's something that I feel needs to be tackled, whether that's going to be by Goshay, whether that's going to be by the government. I do think that it's a problem that needs to be tackled. And so I think that's where the conviction really came from in terms of like really trying to fight for it. And I also started to realize that, you know, we really need to start exploring other options of tackling the issue of funding.
Your Microsoft, can I ask, we're ever switching off people's mics to stop it?
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know what happened. But yeah, I think that's really where the conviction came from is about creating a solution that's also quite community-centered. I think that the, the whole concept of crowdfunding is really to rally the people around you to sort of work towards a specific goal. And so I just wanted to introduce a concept of sort of investing in one another. And that's really where like the conviction started to come from. So yeah, I think my idea was really like consistent throughout, so the, the, the problem was consistent throughout. And the solution I found was also just like growing throughout the competition and it was, it stayed the same, I would say. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Shefaz. And Chido, I'd like to ask you the following question. What are some of the challenges that you experience taking your idea one step further? You're unmute? Well, you'll be fine here, you, Chido, I think. But it's not showing that you're unmute. I think you've got problems connecting or something. I'm going to ask Vuthari if she'd like to answer that question. What are some of the challenges that you experience taking your idea to the next step?
Um, so I think for me, the biggest challenge was access to just the professionals in the field that, um, that the business is based on. So I'm not in the pet industry, but I'm doing a, a business that's completely in the pet industry. And as a medical student, there are some, you know, similarities, but just having that direct access to, to someone who has more information in the field. For example, there are many things that you can Google. There are many sources of information. But until you sit down one-on-one with the person who's in the field and do that more extensive research, then you have very limited research that you can base your business off. So it was initially hard, but eventually we overcome that stumbling, that stumbling block. So I guess the research aspect of it, of like the direct research to find out more about the business and how we can use that information to alter the business model. Initially, those were one of the biggest stumbling blocks.
Thanks so much. Um, Shefaz, would you like to answer that question as well? What are some of the challenges that you experience taking your, your idea one step further?
Um, yeah, so for me, I think it's quite similar to Vuthari. So I'm also a medical student. And so having sort of being a non-technical person, um, trying to build a tech platform was actually like really, really challenging in the, in the beginning stages. I think I'm just trying to find a technical person on, on bringing a technical person onto the team and just finding that person. I realized that my network was quite limited and so I needed to really stretch and find people in that field who would really help me implement the solution because in as much as I had the idea, I still needed to have something to show for it. And even when I actually ended up building a really good and solid team, actually coming to build our minimum viable product was the next stumbling block. So that was, those are the main two challenges that I found. But then with regards to like the pitching and stuff, um, I think my main challenge was really just again, like coming from a.
You're muted, Shefaz.
Sorry about that. I don't know what's going on. But yeah, like sort of coming from a non-finance background, there's certain aspects of the pitch that needed, you know, some sort of like financial projections, for example, and that was quite challenging for me. And so I think those challenges are really mitigated by asking for help and reaching into your own personal network and also just making use of the coaches that you have in the ED community. That really helped. And also just like finding a mentor in the industry that you want to be in. So just as Vuthari mentioned, I mean, going into the crowdfunding space, it was quite challenging. I did have people that were mentoring, but I really needed somebody that was in the industry who had firsthand experience. And so finding that was actually challenging. Um, yeah, so those would be my main three challenges.
Thank you, Shefaz. So Chido, unfortunately, sound is not working and her, she says, understanding our market and figuring out how to make money consistently so that we don't die as we build. And entering competitions is really help us to stay afloat. And so that is her take on that question. Got a question from Brenda Martin as well, and I'm going to put this to you, Vuthari. What do you wish you knew one year ago when you attended the panel of 2020 winners?
Oh, in 2020? Was a long time ago. I, I really wished I'd known how to pitch. Because before you go for the pitch, they tell you, okay, yeah, five minutes. And you know, as someone who's speaking about the business, you want to tell them every single thing. But you obviously can't do that in five minutes. So I wish I'd known what to say and how to say it well in just two to three minutes. Like really sell the idea and make it like as succinct as possible, but leave all the meaty things for, for the questions. I wish I'd also known how to answer questions well, especially because you have a time limit for that as well. So it's really important that you say what you really, really need to say, but you also say it like, you also say it well. So I wish I'd known how to answer questions then. And I also wish I'd known perhaps what they were looking for. You know, sometimes you start off and you're worried about, okay, are they worried about sales? Are they worried about numbers? Are they worried about projection? But really, if you're entering, they want to see that, you know, you have a good business, that it's viable, it's scalable, and that you actually have a good business model. So I wish I'd been able to communicate that back in 2020 with the initial pitch. But I think as you go along in EDHE and as you see other people's pitches as well, you start to realize that there's a trend. There's a certain way in which you should answer questions. There's a certain way in which you should pitch. And also a certain way in which you should do like your slides, for example. So those are small things that are, that can really affect whether you do well in a competition or whether you do not, you don't. And it's technical things that, you know, if, if you're on par with someone in the competition, it affects whether you go through or whether you, or whether you don't. So it's small things like how you pitch, what you say and how you deliver your pitch. Yeah.
We have a question from Alison. Alison, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, I'm just wanting to come in there to support what Vuthari, Vuthari's saying about her pitch or the pitch. And just to say, go and get input. Don't think it looks okay to me, I'll go with what I've got. Get help. Get someone else to look at your slides. Work on them again. Work, think through what you're going to say, because each time you do that, it gets clearer and clearer, which I think is partly why Vuthari was saying she liked having those different rounds. Because as you progress, your pitch becomes clearer because you've thought through it that many more times. So it's a wonderful skill to learn. Start right at the beginning, asking for assistance, looking critically at what you've got and build up from there.
Thank you so much, Alison. Shefaz, would you like to tackle that question as well? What do you wish you knew a year ago when you attended the panel of 2020 winners?
Yeah, so just, uh, actually I knew this when I attended the, the, the panel. But I do want to advise people to actually do it. So please reach out to Alison. And just on this point that Vuthari and Alison have raised, it's very important to have a second pair of eyes when you have your pitch ready. So I'm glad I actually reached out to her after that session to say, hey, you know, like I really need help with my pitch. Because I think from that point on, I got very excited about my idea. But also I started to get somebody that I could constantly sort of get feedback from and very honest feedback, very constructive feedback. So I think even though I, I, I managed to incorporate that quite early, I think it's important to not neglect that point. But secondly, I also wish I'd known that this is, in as much as it is a competition, you're building a business. So you can focus, because it's so spread out over the year, don't focus too much on what the competition is. Like try to build your business. So I saw a lot of businesses actually moving from ideation and just progressing into people being able to explore their ideas and implement their solutions, test their solutions and come back with results. And that's such a beautiful thing to see, just the progression. So in as much as it is a competition, just make sure that you are building your business, even like between those times that you're pitching. And I, I think another thing would just be, I wish I'd known the importance of actually communicating my why. I think that's such an important thing in every pitch. So people really need to know why they should be interested in what you're building. I think social entrepreneurship really speaks to having like a social impact. And that isn't limited to the social impact category. So you might be making a direct contribution to society. Or you might just be making an indirect contribution to society. Maybe you're creating jobs. Or maybe there'll be jobs as a result of your solution. And I think it's so important to get people to care about what you're building. I think that human aspect can never be lost. So yeah, I think those are things to just bear in mind for this year.
Thank you, Shefaz. So is Chido around? Chido, are you back?
Yes, I'm around, Nadia.
Okay, fine. Liza has put up a question there. What support was available during the competition process?
Yeah, so there, there was a lot of support that was available. I think one has already been discussed, being the ability to access like Alison to help us go through our slides. I think in addition to that, we each got mentors. And those mentors were established business people or they're quite well-versed with the business world. So they were able to also assist us, you know, in building the business, not just preparing for the competition. And I think other additional support that we got was actually from, you know, the EDHE like panel. So they were, they're very hands-on, like with each university, they tried to make sure that, you know, they're providing you with the right PR, giving you some advice if you need them. And I think also just answering a little bit on the previous question, what do I wish I'd known? I wish I'd known that I don't need to be the winner of the competition or to be like the top business in order to access those resources. Cause I mean, like now, obviously because I won, I, I do speak to EDHE a lot, but they're already like engaging so much with student entrepreneurs. So even if you don't win, or even if you end at the regional rounds, keep those contacts, talk to those people, ask them for opportunities. You know, again, as an entrepreneur, that's just really how you're going to get the resources you need to keep building.
Thanks so much, Chido. And just to remember that the, the representative for ED within UCT is the Career Service Office. So if you need any help in terms of that, then you just need to come and knock on our door or give us a call or go into my career and we will be able to assist you. So yeah, so that is the link between the ED and the university is the Career Service Office as being the go-to office when you, when we go through these processes. I'm going to ask Shefaz to take the next question. How would you encourage other people who are less confident in their ideas or business models to protect in this initiative and succeed? And I think there's been some touches on that already, but if you'd like to take that on, Shefaz?
Um, so I think the, really like the most important thing that's probably overlooked sometimes is really like how much conviction you have in your business. And I think it really comes through in your pitch. So it's really, really important that the problem that you're solving is one that you've, even if you haven't experienced it yourself, but it's one that you understand and it's one that you've, you know, you've spoken to a couple of people and this is a problem you understand. And this is a solution that you are really, really confident in. So I think it's very important that you don't neglect the importance of really being very confident in the way that you pitch, the way that you pitch your solution. Because sometimes it's not even about what you're saying, it's about how much conviction you have as an entrepreneur. Because even if people don't buy into the solution that you're bringing forward, if they believe in you and just how much passion you're showing about the, this entrepreneurship journey, it's something that they can buy into. So it's something that they can latch into. So as an entrepreneur, I think it's very important to try and be as confident as possible. And if you're finding that, you know, the confidence is lacking a little bit, I think maybe you need to start speaking to your users. Find out, is this a problem that really is big enough? And is the solution that you're bringing forward, um, one that would actually help? And I think that will give you the validation that you need. So if you need to send out surveys to really find out that this is a real problem affecting real people and this is a real solution, then that can give you. this is a real problem affecting real people and this is a real solution, then that can give you a bit of a confidence boost. I think research will also go a long way in ensuring that you're really, really prepared for the competition. So the more prepared you are, the more confident you are when questions are thrown your way. So I think that might help. But yeah, I think, yeah, just, just really believe in what you're doing is that's, that's important, I think.
Thank you, Sherefa Fatsa. Vutari, you've got your hand up. Would you like to go ahead?
Um, I think Chido had hers first, so I'll let her go ahead. It's okay.
Chido, wanna go ahead?
Uh, okay, great. So I think what I just wanted to add i- is that, you know, even though like we've, like I've won, I'm still not hundred percent confident with my business, because there's a lot that we're still building. And I just want to emphasize that building your business, growing it is a progressive process, right? You're not gonna have everything together. Even at the finals, you're not gonna have everything together. But as an entrepreneur, you need to be confident with where you're at in that moment in it, in order to move on to the next step. So even if you're a bit scared or you feel like maybe you're, you know, you don't really know the technical term, so you don't really know exactly how to make someone understand, just give it a shot. You'll be surprised how many entrepreneurs can probably relate with you and where you're at. And be like, no, I see where this person is going, you know, let's move them on to the next step.
Thank you so much. Vutari, you wanna go next?
Um, yes, I think it definitely correlates with what Chido was saying, that you won't have all the pieces together, but it's very important that you communicate the main aspect of your business. Cause sometimes it could have different parts and so many moving parts, but being able to communicate it and having the, this is the main part of the business, it's, it's really, really so important. And as you go along, your business model might change. You know, you might start off with a certain offering in the beginning of the competition and as you lean towards the finals or as you move ahead in the competition, it might change. So just being like cognizant of the changes is okay. And it's not a bad thing for the change to happen. But it's also really important that you know how to communicate the main part of, of your business and what are you selling? And are you solving a problem? What is the problem? Why do you wanna solve it? And how are you gonna solve it? Being able to answer those questions. Or is your business making money? How are you gonna make money? Those are practical questions you can ask yourself to help improve your business model. But things will change as you go along in the journey.
Thank you so much, Vutari. I'm gonna just ask a question pre-ask. What was your source of initial seed funding before your business started making a profit or source of investment before you joined the competition? Vutari, would you like to take that question?
Um, really just our own money. We didn't have any like funding in terms of outside of the competition. We, this was actually the first competition we'd entered, so we weren't like piggybacking on other competitions winnings. But at the beginning, we really didn't have to spend a lot of money. I think sometimes you can get really stressed about where am I gonna get source of funding from and all those type of things. But I think until you know exactly what you wanna do with the money, you shouldn't be worried about that. And because we, we, we didn't know what we wanted to do with the money yet, we, we weren't too pressed about where we're gonna find the funds from. So in the beginning, it was mostly just a research stage of calling people, sending out surveys like, like Chero mentioned. And just like asking people questions. So that wasn't a very capital-intensive stage of the business. So before the competition, it was really just relying on our own source of funding, like our own money savings. But it wasn't a lot where we actually needed an investor or we actually needed five thousand rand. So I think early in the business, do not be too worried about that, especially if you don't know exactly what you want to use the funds for. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Vutari. Chido, would you like to try that question from another angle?
Yes, yes, of course. So for, for us, we took on some odd jobs just to start, because we're a tech business. So we actually did need to develop like some sort of website or technical tool to get our, our, our app running. So we did that. But I think also in the same light, we didn't need massive amounts of money. So we tried to keep it as lean as possible. Our first version didn't have all the features that we wanted. It was just able to show, you know, what we're trying to do. And yeah, I think just to also emphasize that you, you shouldn't be spending a lot of money. You shouldn't be spending thousands to get your business off the ground. And I think also, you know, register when you are ready and when you need to, because obviously with registration comes a lot of other responsibilities, financial responsibilities that you may need to take care of. So just kind of do things step by step.
Thanks so much. Alison, you have a question. Your hand is up.
Sorry, I was going to make a comment to the person who asked about confidence. But I see that they've already gone off the, I think they've left. So it's not as important, but perhaps I'll just say it anyway. So I think there's two aspects of being confident. One is being confident in your idea. And one is being confident in what your own contribution to realizing that idea. And I think sometimes there's a nervousness of sharing. You think, oh, I've got this great idea, I better not tell anybody about it. But it doesn't work like that. In a way, part of the process is you building a community. And as you share your idea, it grows and changes with the, with the contribution of the people you're speaking to. So if you're holding it to yourself, it just stays as it is. It's when you are actually trying it out, testing it out with other people that you see it grow into something exciting. So don't wait for the confidence, develop the confidence through engaging with people, through being brave or being courageous to say, this is, this is my idea. You know, how do you think I can take it forward? Those steps are really important. And otherwise, we lose a whole lot of energy and wonderful ideas that don't go anywhere, because nobody knows about them.
Agree. Alison, I think also the other important part is that to participate in many things is possible to push out your idea there. So that you grow that idea and round off that idea, etcetera. So, you know, there's so many opportunities within, within UCT for you to enter competitions or participate in things. Do those type of things that will grow confidence, will grow ideas. Your business will grow. And also, there's nothing greater than learning from your peers, I think. And that's also very important. The market will also tell you what to do. So yeah, great stuff there. Thank you very much. Um, Salom has asked, and I think all three ladies can answer. How do you manage being an entrepreneur and being a student at the same time? And I know, I think we've got a fourth year and fifth year medical student here and a postgrad finance and commerce student here, which already says a lot about the workload that your people have. Vutari, would you like to go ahead first?
Um, that's a really interesting question and I don't think I have the answer because I'm still learning it myself. And in saying that, it's, it's really dependent on yourself. You need to find what really, really works for you. But I think the most important thing is to have a team, whether it's a business team, so that you're not building this business alone. And it really helps take a lot of the pressure on you, off of you. And also having a team in terms of like your life, having friends who you can rely on, having a family who supports you. I think having a team really in the extensiveness of the words really does help you to, to manage the two. But also practical things of being able to manage your time, that is so, so, so important. And no time can go unaccounted for, because it also depends on how busy your schedule is. If you're very, very busy, you can't just be like, ah, you know, whatever happens to the day, happens to the day. You need to take control of your time and you need to manage it well and you need to be very assertive in how you, you want the, in how you want your day to plan out. But I think one thing that really helps me to, to balance the two is knowing that if I don't, if I don't go for the business, I'm, I'm going to regret it. Like if I don't do everything that I can to, to push this business, then I'm gonna regret it. And also if I don't focus on my schoolwork, I'm gonna regret it. So I think those are very tough questions to put on myself. But it really does help me to push both my schoolwork and push the business as well. But all in all, you have to find what works for you.
Thanks so much, Vutari. Chido, would you like to answer from your perspective? Your mic is on, Chido.
Yes, uh, thank you. So I think very similar to what Vutari said, you have to become very smart with your time. I think anything worth doing requires a lot of sacrifice. So for me personally, there were some things I had to sacrifice, like spending some weekends indoors, doing research, looking for the right partners, the right people to consult in my business, drafting, you know, non-disclosure agreements and stuff like that. But I also have, so I have another founder friend and if, once a month, we meet up to talk about our businesses. That's one of my support structures. And it really helps because she then acts as my co-founder, but obviously not formerly my co-founder. And she's also a student, so it helps us to, you know, make sure that we have someone we're accountable to for the startup side of things. Cause I mean, with school, your assignments will keep you on track, you know, your tests and exams will keep you on track. But sometimes with your startup, if you don't have an accountability structure, you can easily just let days go by, weeks. And before you know it, you haven't really done, you haven't really moved much. And I think one more thing that I do to balance being a student and, and, and a founder is that I actually try and merge both of them and not try and make them separate things. Cause then that then makes you feel like you're being pulled in two different directions. So, so yeah, you know, take, take time to find a way to merge them either by joining societies, supporting the careers network with your entrepreneurial talents, and finding networks of people who are doing similar things. And then you'll find that it becomes a little bit easier.
Thank you, Chido. Sherefa Fatsa? Would you like to respond?
Um, yeah, so I think I would just be saying pretty much what Vutari and Chido have been saying. But I think it just goes to show how important it is to have a really good support system. And whether that's like within the business or even just outside, I think it's also really important to just make sure that the people that you're bringing onto your team are people you can rely on. Because as a student, if you've got people that, you know, could drop you at any time, that could be a little bit of a, an inconvenience for you. So I think just when you start curating your team, if it's people that you don't really know well, just make sure that it's at least people that you can rely on. And I know like sometimes when you're a founder, it's like, there's this urge to sort of be in, you know, like not necessarily being in charge, but like knowing every single thing about what's going on every single time, being the one to execute all the time. But I would really just advise people to get into the habit of actually delegating. So if you have a team, use the team. So if people are sort of doing one specific part of the business, just let it go. Like I think it's so important to relinquish control sometimes. So really get into the habit of delegating and trusting that the people that you have in your team will fulfill the role that you've, that they're responsible to fulfill and they'll fulfill it well. So I think also just with like creating a schedule, it's very important to just prioritize rest. So like be smart with your time, yes, you know, put time away for school, put time away for working on your business. Or just like Chido said, you can merge them if that works for you. But whatever you do, I think the most important thing also is just like pouring into yourself as much as possible throughout this time. Because burnout is very, very real. And if you find yourself in a state where you've burnt out because you weren't taking enough time for yourself and the things that you like outside of your business and outside of, you know, school, you might just find yourself in a very precarious situation. So yeah.
Thank you, Sherefa Fatsa. Patrick's got a very interesting question. I'm going to ask you to continue, Sherefa Fatsa, and respond to this question. Was there any envy that was experienced with those close to you? Your mic is muted, Sherefa Fatsa.
Oh, sorry. Do you mean like during the competition or after the competition or?
Patrick, would you like to say more about the question, where it's coming from?
Um.
After?
No, honestly, I, I don't, I don't think I've ever experienced this, but also I've never come across anyone that's visibly like overtly envious. So no, I would, I would say no. This, I, I think the reception was quite good. And maybe it has to do with the fact that Goosier was really targeting something that people either understand from firsthand experience or like have seen other people being financially excluded. And so it was sort of like, oh, this is, this is something that could actually work for the greater good of society. So either that or people hit it really well. Either way, I can't say I experienced it, to be honest.
I'm going to answer Patrick from a competition perspective. And I must say that camaraderie amongst the students, entrepreneurs within that competition, it's quite palatable. It's actually quite great to see how people wish each other well. And, and as entrepreneurs, I think the best thing here is the peer support that you get. The understanding that your businesses can work with each other, there are businesses that can collaborate, etcetera. That is also the ground to do that sort of work. So envy, I haven't come across it. Maybe I'm being just blindsided about it or something, but I haven't seen it in the, this will be the fourth year that I'm in the competition. And I haven't seen it yet. I'm not sure, Chido, if you have a different view on it?
Um, yeah, I, just a little bit of a different view. Um, I just think that you have to be careful what you share about your business in general, whether you have people being envious or not. Just because as you build and you're quite sensitive to a lot of things, you don't know people's intentions. But in general, yeah, people aren't like overtly competitive and aggressive and all of that. Like I, I've never experienced that.
Thank you so much, Chido. Just to continue with the question Patrick asked earlier on, does an existing business have to already be providing a service? And so one of the qualifiers is you've got to be the owner and founder and controls shareholder. And the business must at least be running for three consecutive months and must have generated an income or receive some form of investment. Does that answer your question? If you have any further questions, I'm gonna put my, my email address near the end and then you can just ask any other questions or email me or your questions further. Okay. Thank you, Patrick. So I'm going to ask, um, Matamba, have you got a question to ask us? Your hand is up?
Yes, Nadia. Thanks, thanks guys for the discussions. So Nadia, I just want to understand what you just said now in response to Patrick. Cause there's a section in the competition that's only for, for the ideas. So, um, does that also apply to that in a sense of, um?
No. Oh, yeah?
Hi, Nadia. I did not hear what you said.
I said, no, go ahead.
Oh, yes. I was, yes, I just wanted to find out if that also applies to, I mean, because obviously in a, um, um, a business model that's still in the ideation phase hasn't like really operated.
Yeah, quite correct, Matamba. In the business ideas, it's exactly that, it's an idea, you know? It hasn't gone to market, it hasn't been tested or anything, but you've got an idea, a good business model, etcetera. That is what you're gonna sell. So that is category one. So category two, three and four are the existing businesses. Those are done a little bit differently. So it has to be running for three months consecutively, but prior to entering the competition, of course, and should have, should be generating an income. We're talking about generating an income, it doesn't have to be huge amounts of money. And neither does the form of investment have to be a huge amount of money as well. Okay? And then of course, the other thing is that, that the person who enters the competition must be the owner, founder, controlling shareholder of that existing business. Does that respond to your question, Matamba?
Yes, thanks, Nadia.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Um, so I just. Sherefa Fatsa, which is not as much, this is a competition, you entered an amazing community of student entrepreneurs who are incredibly genuine and collaborative. And this, I must say, I have experience as well. And that goes, we must also remember, we, we compete against twenty-six universities. And the, um, the growth from there is just phenomenal. And I think the, the community that you belong to afterwards is even greater, because those students continue to support you as an entrepreneur, as you would support them as well. So that build that you have to be part of the competition this, this big, it's really something that you have long after the competition is done. And as I think, as earlier said, one of, one of the winners, it's not about winning. Actually, it's more about building your business, getting to know what you can do and putting your name out there and the business out there. That is the win for me. It's about people getting to know who you are, what your business do, can do. And, and also to look at other businesses and see, how can I improve my business, looking at society, etcetera. So that is what it's all about. It's about the growth of you as a person and as well as your business. Um, I'm going to ask Sherefa Fatsa and then Vutari and Chido to answer the same question. And then Mponi, you, do you wanna go first before I ask the question?
Yes, please, because my question relates to the previous question that was just asked now. Um, because I, we still, I'm still finding, I'm finding it difficult to actually like clarify between the ideation phase and the execution phase because um then you actually said that if you have a cons, if you have a concept and it has not been tested yet, you don't have to prove that you have made profit. Or you actually have investment, just to clarify.
Yeah, so it's ideas exactly that you don't have to show you have investment or that you've made any money. It's still an idea. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay. Um, ladies, if you could just answer, what piece of advice would you give the students who want to become entrepreneurs and who want to participate in this competition? What is your one piece of advice you wish somebody else told you? Chita?
Yeah, oh, I was hoping you wouldn't start with me. But um, I think one piece of advice would be to just go for it, obviously. Um, I'm sure you hear that a lot. But no matter what your idea is, even if there like a thousand people doing it or you haven't really found competitors, just kind of go for it and engage people to help you communicate it better. Because uh with my idea, teaching African languages, like if, whenever I speak about everyone refers me to Duolingo, which is the biggest language platform in the world, um, because that's all they know. No one has really heard about African languages. So it may have felt like it was gonna be a tough sell, but I mean, I mean, you know, we won by God's grace. So just go for it. You never know what will come out of it and what you'll learn along the journey.
Thanks, Chita. Shehafatso, would you like to answer?
Um, yeah, I think for me, uh, one piece of advice would be, I was actually just gonna say pretty much the same thing as Chido. Just take the plunge and enter. Um, but I guess I'll say, like, don't be afraid to ask for help. And whether you're asking for help from your friends to just listen to your pitch. Um, even like people that you don't know, like people who've never heard of the idea at all, like, don't be afraid to really um sell your idea and like put it forward, like really believe in your idea. So um, and whenever you're struggling, whatever you're struggling with, whichever aspect of the pitch or your business, like really don't be afraid to just email people. Like send cold emails if you have to, to people that tell them that you need help. Some people will respond, some people might not respond. But I think um it's just about really reaching out. I, when I started, I really didn't have a really huge network. But it was because I was willing to really ask people I knew to ask people they know. Um, if they could just have a one minute or, you know, one, sorry, one hour consultation with me over Zoom to just explain a concept that I didn't understand. And I think that's just, it has a lot of power because it it builds a network around you and it builds a community that you can always draw back um, some information from. So don't be afraid to ask for help um at all throughout this, throughout this. Because, yeah, no man is an island and you can't build this alone. Um, yeah. And I would also say like, um, another piece of advice would be, just work on your public speaking skills. So I know like when it comes to pitching online, it's very different from like pitching in person and I'm not sure how it's going to be done this year. But um just practice um public speaking and really trying to get your point across. So that when you do finally pitch, um, you know, you're actually confident um in yourself and in your business. Um, and that shows and 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 that's able to 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 shine through when you, when you give your pitch. So, yeah, that's what I would say.
Thank you, Shehafatso. Puthari, would you like to try and answer?
Um, yeah, I think the reason why my answer will be very similar to Chido and Chehawas is because it it really is so important that you believe in yourself and you believe in your business. Um, I think when I started the competition, I wasn't sure about whether it would work, whether there's a role for this business in South Africa. And like, because it's, it's what I would think so unique. Um, and it's beautiful because E D H E wants exactly that. We're looking for like unique um businesses. So sometimes you can think about your business and say, no, man, no one is gonna wanna uh listen to something like that or no one would want to invest in a business like that. But it's so important that you believe in your business and its potential. And soon you'll realize what other people do as well. Um, so believe in yourself and believe in your business and do the research. Do the research about your business, about um the field you're entering into. Um, just know so much about your business that whatever question they ask you, you're able to answer it confidently because you know so much about your business. At the end of the day, it is your business and it's so important that you know it through and through. Um, so do research. And I love what Chehawas said about like just calling people and asking them for help. This really is a time where resources are endless, like whether it's resources online, resources from people, resources from anywhere. Um, just look out for those reser- resources, because whatever you need, it is out there. It's either sitting with someone who's in your field or someone who's doing something completely different, but will still be able to help you out. So I think if you're struggling with some, something, like always, always consult and always do the research and always find out how you can overcome the stumbling block. But it all believe, it all starts with believing in yourself and believing in your business.
Thank you so much. Shehafatso, do you have a question to ask or you want to respond to something?
Um, no, no, I just wanted to add to what Puthari was saying about like the uniqueness of your business and even what Chido was saying. So like, sometimes honestly, you'll think that your business is so unique and then you'll go on to Google and somebody is doing it already. And I just want you guys to not be discouraged by this. But because for me, um, it was actually so close to home that there's another crowdfunding platform that's pretty much doing, um, you know, very similar to Goshia. Um, I got the question a lot. So I think if you do have that situation where, you know, you have another competitor that's, you know, very similar to what you're doing, it doesn't mean discard the idea completely. But when you pitch, just make sure that the differentiator and your selling point and your value proposition is clear. So that the judges know and the the audience knows exactly what makes you, what sets you apart. So I think that's just important. And then just like on a last um note, for me, I think another thing that helped was, um, before I entered E D H E or during the competition. I was actually part of another competition, um, and another competition. And so I was basically entering multiple competitions because I really wanted to improve my chances with E D. Um, and also just to get into the habit of pitching. So, you know, if you have some time, you know, just look up some other competitions online. Even if it's not something major, I really promise you, when people start asking you questions in other competitions. This allows you to think about your business continuously and constantly, even during those, um, you know, stages between the provincial and the regionals. With E D, like even when I wasn't busy with E D, I was doing something else. And it just kept me thinking about Goshia continuously. So I think that might help. Um, but if not, just keep, you know, keep your business going, running. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Shehafatso. There was one question earlier and it says, is the business, it's Salom, I'm not sure if you're in the room still. But is the business only meant for businesses that are to be based in South Africa? Or can you also compete for business that's going to be based in another country? And the the short answer of that is that the business must have a footprint in South Africa. Okay. If you want to know more about what I'm saying right now, anyone of you's drop me an email. I've dropped, I've put my email address in here earlier on. Um, and um also ways to get um in contact with me. I've also put in some, there's some great resources where we've got an entrepreneurship tab within the career service website. There's some resources there, um, lots of information that you can use there as well. Um, and then, of course, the application address I put up here as well. And just to remember that career service is your go-to space for the E D competition. We directly work with the, with the E D H E, we're their representative this side. And we um try and make sure that we connect with them as far as possible. Okay. I have also put in down here a poll, a poll for us to see what we can do further for you guys. If you could please respond to that, that could really help us. Um, and do you, um, and if you have any further questions, please do contact me. Um, and thank you so much, everyone, for your time. Um, Puthari, Shehafatso, Chido, great to have you ladies here. Um, I was hoping that Suwenga will join us and she has just won the Adio um competition for the um, she's the UNESCO winner of Dream for Change projects. And I'm sure you might have seen it on our social media platform as well. Um, so we wa- wish her also all the very best in her her endeavors to continue her business as well. So, yeah. Um, if anybody has any more questions, further questions, I'd be, I'm happy to respond to it. And if you can please um complete the form that's online here at the moment, um that, that, you know, we really would appreciate because it does tell us what further you would like us to do. Once again, well done to Shehafatso, Chido and Puthari. Um, we keep on watching what you're doing. Please put add your names in here for them, for students to follow you. Um, and if you wa- if you wish to earn no support in any way, please do so. Thank you. Thanks, Salom. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, Nadia. Bye.
Thank you, ladies. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. It was great having you all here. And we'll probably do one again in the second um quarter. Thank you.